I am delighted to have on this panel with me François-Marie Goujon, who's the Deputy Assistant Secretary General for Defence Policy and Planning at NATO, General Michelin, who's the Deputy Chief of Staff in Armaments and Logistics at the Finnish Defence Forces, and General Driggers, who's the Director of Plans, Policy and Strategy at United States European Command. So with those introductions, I'll just give some of the background to how we run these. It's a special session, it is on the record. When it comes to asking questions, as you did if you were at the launch, raise your hand, and then when I indicate that it's your turn to ask a question, press the red button, and then you ask your question. If there is enough interest, I'll probably take it in groups of three. If it's taking a bit of time to get it going, then I'll take one at a time, and we'll field it out amongst the panelists. As you'll notice in the synopsis for this event, it remarked on NATO's ambition. I went to the NATO summit in Washington in July, and the desire or the ambition was well stated there, whether it be future-proofing support for Ukraine, whether it be how to deal with resilience against grey zone activity by Russia and so on and so forth, and all against a tight defence planning budgets, where many nations reckon that with all of the things that they had to do, 2% might be just about enough to restore conventional capability, never mind everything else that needed to be done. But the ambition was stated. I also listened in intently to General Cavoli and what he said at the summit. And I'll only pick out two things from it before handing over to the panel. The first thing he said, which I think, which to me was a change of culture, was that in the past, the Deputy Supreme Allied Commander Europe would go around the NATO nations and ask them what they were going to contribute. Now the ethos is they go and ask what they're not going to contribute to NATO. So I think that's an important distinction. Associated with what he said was that the family of plans that underpin DDA were the statement of force requirement for those was to be resource unconstrained. Now, anyone who's done defence planning goes, really? How's that going to work? Because if you have unconstrained resource unconstrained, it often means sequencing. But there's a journey to get to that decision, which takes us through, and the panel will be more clear on it, to about October of next year. And so the way that we've organised this, and we've got three great speakers, and deliberately, we will start with a view from headquarters NATO, perspective from headquarters NATO, then a perspective from a national command, and then last but definitely not least, in the European context, a view from US European Command. So with nothing further to say, François-Marie.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and good afternoon, everyone. I would just like to congratulate IWS for the extremely timely scheduling of this event and this session, because we are just about to start in a week from now, the bilateral meetings with all 32 allies on the Capability Targets 25, and this being one of the key steps in the way to get those targets approved by October next year. So it's absolutely right to have this conversation right now, and about the linkage between defence planning and operational plan, and what that means. On this topic, more precisely, I would just like to start by personal observation. Two years ago and beyond, defence planning was looked at by capitals as very much a technical process that was handled by a group of experts, without much significance, and without really direct implications on national decisions. In essence, the defence planners would show up every year, were greeted, just like the dentist, every year, and presenting the bill, and the moment they moved out the door and the words that had been exchanged or said was completely forgotten until the next year. This has changed dramatically over the past two years, obviously for two reasons. The first one is pretty much obvious, is the war in Ukraine and Europe waking up to the reality that war is now as a doorstep, and we need to get our acts together, and we need to rebuild our collective defence system. That's no secret. The other reason is that there is now a direct linkage between operational planning and defence planning that was introduced by the political guidance that ministers of NATO endorsed in 2023, meaning that the main source of requirements for defence planning is now the operational plans that SACR presented to NATO a year, two years ago, a year and a half ago, and plans that were approved by heads of state and governments at the highest level. So the main source of defence planning is now operational plans and tactical plans, including in their regional geographic dimension. So with those capability targets, this military requirement now that's firmly rooted in operational plans, defence planning, the purpose of defence planning is to allow each ally to really focus on what is needed for deterrence and defence, and for SACR to be able to fight the plans today, sorry, and in the future. Just to elaborate a little bit more on the context of defence planning now. If I zoom out slightly, we're now very much into the implementation phase of key decisions in the political military world realm that were made in Madrid, Vilnius and Washington. So we're starting to implement those key decisions, and as I'm sure you know, they revolve around four big themes: the plans, so we now have a family of plans, an architecture of operational plans that is almost complete. SACR just released an update of his overall strategic plans for his entire area of responsibility. So we have this family of plans, we have a reform of the NATO command structure, so the overall command architecture of NATO, to allow SACR to command and across the entire area of responsibility and across the different regions, with a setup of new headquarters, one in JFC Norfolk on the US continent, on the American continent, and one responsible for reinforcement and logistics and coordination of logistics in Ulm, Germany. So we have a new transformed command structure, we have a new decision-making system to ensure that nations, ambassadors, the North Atlantic Council is capable of making decisions at speed of relevance, and finally, we have a new force model. And this new force model, as I'm sure you know, relies mostly on a general mobilisation scheme rather than on the fourth generation that used to be the system before. So in the first place, now defence planning is meant to ensure that allies individually are able to prepare and deliver the forces that they are going to commit to the plans, or they committed to providing to the plans. So this is what defence planning is now about, and this is why now it's really front and centre in the conversation that we are having with the capitals. In other words, defence planning today is the main transformation tool for allies to shift from an expeditionary posture to a collective defence posture. If I zoom out a little bit more, the role of defence planning is slightly broader than that, because it's intrinsically connected with other aspects of our collective defence. It sets the demand signal for reinforcement and sustain, the reinforcement and sustainment network, in essence, how to enable the flow of forces and equipment across Europe. It explains nations what they need to provide in terms of host nation support to make sure that the plans are enabled and the troops can reach their destination in time to be effective. So it is also a matter of setting the demand signal for host nation support and logistical enablement. It also gives context to civil plans, and I'm sure you've noticed that in the Washington Declaration, governments committed to integrate civilian planning, and that includes resilience, which is essential for our troops to be able to fight, civilian planning into national and collective defence planning. And more broadly, it indirectly sets the demand signal for the industry and gives the industry an idea of what is required to be able to fight a protracted war, and also an indication, and we had, as recently as the beginning of this week, a meeting with allies' personnel directors, it gives also nations an indication of what they should be prepared to supply in terms of human resources and workforce. So defence planning is not, my point, my general point is defence planning is not just about platforms, a number of platforms, it's also the overall demand signal that collective defence requires for deterrence and defence to be effective, and for NATO to be able to command and control across the entire area of responsibility. So that was my first point. Now on to the key challenges of this very cycle that we are in the middle of. Well, first of all, it's mostly a question of, implementation is going to be a question of resources, there's no way around it. And you were just saying that, you were just mentioning the question, the point about 2%. It is absolutely clear that the requirement from the operational plans translated into capability targets that we're now discussing with nations is going to be much more demanding than the past cycle. And it's absolutely clear that 2% is not going to be enough to cover for all the shortfalls that we allowed in the past cycle, and plus all the increase that collective defence is requiring. I can't give you very accurate figures, but we are probably much closer to 3% than we are to 2. The second point is that behind this is a sense of urgency. Granted, NDPP cycle extends across 19 years, but what really matters is what's happening now, and decisions that are being made now, because we all know that to build a capability beyond just the acquisition of a platform, the lead time is probably around five to 10 years. If you speak about doctrine, organisation, training, recruitment, infrastructure, the whole capability dimension around the platform, it's probably around five to 10 years. And if we want to be up for a potential regeneration of Russian forces in between five and 10 years, which is the sort of current estimation that you can find out there, it's probably wise to start spending and investing now to build those capabilities. So first of all, more than 2% is required, then it's required now. And of course, the third point is there has to be a focus on critical shortfalls that we cannot allow to sustain, cannot afford to sustain, and I'm sure you've heard about GBAD, it is something that we've massively underfunded in the past years, and we absolutely need GBAD, because that's a precondition for our deterrence posture to be effective and to be credible. So it's a matter of credibility, it's not only a matter of effectiveness, it's a matter of credibility. And then beyond that, there is the question of land forces, logistics, enablers, and beyond that, of course, stocks, ammunition stocks, spare parts, the ability to fight a protracted war beyond the first 30 days of war. So those are the key areas and key challenges which we are going to discuss with each individual ally, and to encourage them to spend more, to spend now and spend on those critical shortfalls. And lastly, I will just mention three areas where we think there is emphasis to be put for the Hague Summit and beyond. First of all, there is NATO-EU cooperation, there is a NATO-EU cooperation agenda that's obviously getting a high level of attention as we speak, with the general international context that we're in now, but also the emphasis by the European Commission on some areas that are supporting deterrence and defence. Second is the importance of standards and interoperability. If we want to be able to fight as an alliance, we need to do better at interoperability, and our nations need to do better at applying NATO standards that are already existing, let alone developing others. And finally, I would mention space as an area where we are making some quick progress, and where the NATO agenda is also fairly high. I will just leave it there, because I don't want to take too much of the time, and I'd be, of course, happy to take your questions.
François-Marie, that's excellent, thank you very much. Just some of the things that pulled there, I'm sure that industry will appreciate that the demand signal will hopefully become more clear, some discussion on that in the launch of our dossier, whether nations will like that the personnel signal for human resources is going to be, is a happy one to land. And it goes back to your pulling teeth analogy, you know, in the past where you're trying to pull them, now you're trying to get nations to add dentures into the mouth. So you may still be unwelcome visitors when you arrive every year. But thank you very much, General, over to you.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, dear friends, good afternoon. A lot has happened in the last three years. Russia's brutal attack on Ukraine has continued as a bloody bore of attrition with incredible evilness and cruelty. The brave and firm defensive battle of Ukrainian troops and Ukraine as a nation is vital for Europe and the whole Western world. Our obvious responsibility is to ensure adequate and concrete support for Ukraine. And it's vital for NATO and every member nation to recognise the importance of defence. And in this situation, we have, I'd like to say, clear avenue of fire for defence planning and strengthening of our military capabilities. NATO defence planning process is well described in our publications, and we normally start with thorough analysis of threat and our own strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats, so we do SWOT analysis. And after this, it's easier to estimate and select centre of gravity and find decisive points. And when we do all this carefully, we'll find critical capabilities and operational needs. In modern warfare, we aim to be prepared for joint combined multi-domain operations, and this is the most effective and at the same time most complicated way to use our capabilities together. We want to make this happen, and this means that we have to fulfil some critical requirements. For example, logistics and C4ISR assets have to be ready and capable. And it's vital to take along enablers to defence planning process as early as possible. And by this way, we can consider opportunities, limitations and critical needs early enough. NATO defence planning process gives capability requirements for member nations. National capability analysis has to be done together with all services, branches and civilian authorities too. These two processes should be connected together. Fruitful interaction is crucial for both of them. In Finland, we have the National Emergency Supply Agency, NESA. It is an organisation operating under the Ministry of Economic Affairs and Employment, and it is tasked with planning and operative measures related to developing and maintaining security of supply. In cooperation with other authorities, including Finnish Defence Forces and the private sector, the NESA ensures that the continuity of the critical functions of Finnish society can be safeguarded during crises and disruptions. This is a central component in Finnish concept of comprehensive defence and comprehensive Deterrence consists of material capabilities, skills of warriors and capability to organise joint combined multi-domain operations. Strategic communication is in a big role too. Joint combined capabilities like logistics, long-range precision strike and ISR capabilities are emphasised in NATO defence planning process. By Article III of NATO Treaty, every nation is responsible to take care of national defence. And this means that member nations must build and maintain capabilities and plan how to use these capabilities nationally. On the other hand, NATO's responsibility is to estimate and plan how alliance defend its sovereignty and integrity, what kind of capabilities is needed, who is responsible to build them, and how we as an alliance are going to use them. Fair burden sharing is a good method for this. National capabilities are the basement of NATO's power. Adequate investments, well-organised procurement functions, security of supply, proper maintenance capabilities and lifecycle management guarantee high level of material capabilities. Of course, all the material has to be interoperable. We should have as much exactly similar material as possible. Possibility of cross-using material should be our goal. Education and training are the basement of capable troops. Training has to be a scathing from basics towards applied and complicated exercises up to joint combined troops in multi-domain operations. To make all this happen, we need close cooperation and common understanding of military and total defence capabilities and operational needs. After all this, it's operational planning process which assess and define how these capabilities are to be used if needed. Defence planning process and operational planning process are linked together. We live in a very complicated world, and if we want to establish joint multi-domain operations, our plans have to be brilliant and coordinated. Money talks, but money is not everything. We need attitude, attitude is everything. Let's remember that, and via NATO, we are stronger together. Thanks.
Thanks very much, General, and I think NATO is very happy to have Finnish attitude added to this.
Antisu, Viniti.
I mean, it was good, I thought it was great that you mentioned so strongly Russia in the beginning of your piece, because I think it was Sekdef Austin who said NATO expansion was not the cause of Russia's invasion of Ukraine, Russian invasion of Ukraine is the cause of NATO expansion, and your presence here representing Finland is exactly evidence of that. But you also brought out deterrence and the other aspects that are required and that, and I think there was quite a lot of high headquarters NATO, national command structure resonance there between you. But you also did mention some of those critical enablers, you know, the low-volume, high-tech pieces, which all too often in the past have fallen upon the United States to provide. So on that note, I'll hand over to you, General.
I'd also tell you that, thank you, that I had the opportunity to visit the UCOM J5 at the time. Little did I know I would be taking that job years later. And it was very apparent to me that the NATO approach to defence planning, to capability targets, and the European Command approach were not very well aligned, and it was very interesting to watch that. So you can imagine my surprise when I showed up in early September to this job to see how much has changed. General Cavoli spoke to the Council of Foreign Relations in August, shortly after the Washington Summit, and one of the things he noted, he said, "It's kind of hard to overstate how much things have changed." One of the main things that's changed with the Russian illegal invasion in Ukraine is political will. In Madrid, heads of state and government told General Cavoli to begin to implement the NATO DDA and to begin writing operational plans. When I was at NATO before that, that was unthinkable. You didn't do that. That amount of political will is hard to overstate how important that is in order to get the process rolling with these regional plans. And I would say that UCOM, especially in the time that I've been there, has remained much more aligned than we certainly were eight to 10 years ago in that process. We have stayed closely aligned and have taken to working through the UCOM plans under the moniker of three key principles: alliance first, warfighting focused, and plans based. And those are very important key tenets. Alliance first, I think speaks for itself, warfighting focused, it's not just about building relations across the alliance, it's not just about bilateral relations, it is about making sure that we have the readiness to execute war plans. And that is, I think that is a key feature on what we are focused on getting after. And plans based, which I think is an interesting driver. Normally, you see, you develop a strategy, and then you begin figuring out how you're going to align ends, ways and means, and then you write the plans. This turns that on its head just a little bit, and I think that that's an important distinction, because with the plans in hand, that means that we can begin having the hard conversations with our 32 allies about requirements to fulfil those plans. It is an interesting strategic approach, and it's one that I think is critical to driving clear-eyed conversations, building trust, and to be able to have the kind of discussions about risk that we need to have as an alliance, and I'll touch on that in just a moment. I will say that, as an example of alliance first, I do want to highlight, I just came from sunny, at the time sunny, it kind of came into the rain getting here, but sunny Garmisch, where we had the Combined Component Commander Conference that brought together the UCOM staff and the UCOM component commanders, along with the Allied Command Operation staff and the Joint Force Command commanders for a two-day conference to talk on these very topics. So the alignment continues, and I can tell you that we were having very much the same conversation that we're having here. I do want to reflect on what, again, what these bring. The plans that we put in place, not only do they provide that alignment between SHAPE and UCOM, but it also allows us to have a discussion of alignment with each individual nation. How do we align the national requirements for their defence? How do we understand their Article III requirements, as well as what happens in our Article V scenario, and the support they provide to enabling? So again, it aligns the conversations, it provides a baseline from which we can exercise now, much more clearly than what we've had in the past, and then obviously, the baseline to guide our investment and our investment conversations. These are the first real deterrence plans we've had since 1989. And oh, by the way, we've been pretty good at out-of-area operations, and it's time to get back to the home base, the home game of deterrence and defence in the Euro-Atlantic I do want to talk on a couple of challenges that are there. We've already talked about two of the legs of the stool, that's the political will, and then the plans, and the plans that drive the military requirements. And now, as is the theme of this entire conference, how does industry respond with the capabilities? And that's the third leg that I think this conversation comes at precisely the right time, to understand how do we actually resource these requirements that we're identifying. And I will broaden the discussion, I'll offer a broadening of the discussion. I just came from Joy Bay, San Antonio, where I was the installation commander. I spent a lot of time talking about air conditioning in that job, and it gave me an appreciation for, we spent a lot of time talking about high-end equipment, high-end capabilities. One of the things that I do not want us to lose from this is there's some basic blocking and tackling that our nations are going to have to remember and not forget about. When we're talking about F-35s, when we're talking about Patriot missile systems, when we're talking about other GBAD systems, there's also buildings that have to come along. And with buildings come the requirement for electricians and masons and pipe fitters. And with buildings come the requirement for electricians and masons and pipe fitters. And we're finding that in some of our efforts, even in the United States, where we are trying to get after very high end capabilities, it's very basic requirements that are slowing us down. And so as we think about what we're bringing to this question, it is a holistic picture. Everything from somebody who can fix some plumbing to somebody who can fix the most exquisite electronics that we have out there and it's all got to come together. So I would say that when we talk about the industry and the implied competition in our opening session between the US industry and European industry, as you look at the requirements, I would humbly offer that there's plenty of work out there for all of us. The last one to that point that I'll talk to before I close, another challenge, you know, you mentioned, sir, the unconstrained planning. And that unconstrained planning can have political implications and it can kind of hurt just a little bit. I want to tell a story from my last assignment. I did a professional development trip to Toyota to watch their manufacturing, brilliant manufacturing process with key performance indicators, excuse me, key performance indicators at every major stop that you go to and you'd see these beautiful plans laid out. And I asked the vice president for production, so whenever you go and you discuss with these, this particular team about their performance, what do you do? What happens when you walk up and you see that they are meeting all of their key performance indicators? And she said, well, I go up and I congratulate them on meeting their key performance indicators and I note I'm not seeing any red on the slide. And then they very proudly will say, that's right, we're not, we're doing it. And then she would look at them and say, well, it looks like you're setting your sights too low. That is a different way of thinking about red on the slide. And I don't mean Russian red, I mean red in terms of performance. It's a different way of looking at that. When you plan against unconstrained requirements, there's going to be a lot of red. I think that what we're going to find is that we're all going to find ourselves short of where we think we would need to be if we would actually have to execute those war plans, those operational plans. That I would contend to you is a good thing because that is what allows us to have transparent, truthful and sometimes difficult conversations about risk. And then the kind of discussions to where we begin having the question about how can we balance this risk? How can we share this risk? How can we together mitigate this risk as allies and partners? I think that is the kind of conversation that we absolutely need to have because that also builds like, again, that builds the trust that we need. So as we move forward, I know that this, I will probably feel this question about the political environment. The only thing I'll say is that I'm very glad about one element of political stability that's going on right now. And glad I say that in a tongue in cheek word, word. It's clear to me that from a political stability perspective, President Xi and President Putin are going to be around for a long time. As a consistent, consistent thing that we all face, regardless of the political challenges and turmoil that we may see on this side of the line. That is something that we should all bear bear in the back of our minds, that that is a pretty consistent political picture that's going to last for a long time, regardless of how things end with Ukraine and move forward. And that that should spur us all to have those hard conversations on risk, on requirements and defense spending. Well, that'll close. Thank you.
Thank you. That was excellent and really important to pull out the political will piece. I like the piece on plans based and and it is going to be a hard discussion in in national capitals and that it red equals risk and that knowing what risk is means you can do something about it. If you don't know it, you can't. And then, of course, and it's come up again, the the requirement for industry to be involved in a way that maybe we had forgotten as as we'd got away from things. And of course, your final comment on political stability from people who contest the rules based order is always a wise one. On that, I will look to see if there are any questions that people might want to ask. Yes. Yes, there.
Yeah. Franz Scotty, double I, double S, Associate Fellow. I got two quick questions. First of all, for the panel, what are some of the most critical capability gaps based on this new regional defense plans for of European NATO members? And what do you think the timelines here are? Are they really five to 10 years until we close some of these gaps? Are they priorities? And my second question is really about NATO standards in general. When you look at the war in Ukraine, obviously there's a big issue with different types of ammunitions provided by Western countries, which on paper should all be standardized, right? I'm particularly talking about 155 millimeter ammo. What kind of additional enforcement mechanism are there available for the alliance to really make sure that we actually become more standardized and interoperable when it comes to those very, very basic, basic capabilities here? Thank you.
Franz has done the piece of asking two questions, so I'll let you answer those and we'll start from that end and then move back. No, that's all right.
Well, I'll first start, I think we're learning a lot from the work we're doing with the support of Ukraine. I think we're learning a lot of a picture of what the future state of warfare could look like. And we're finding that the capable, I would contend that the, some of the shortfalls that were, that the Ukrainians are having to work through are probably some of the shortfalls that we were faced, you know, in specifically in terms of air defense. And air defense against new systems, lots of challenge in the counter uninhabited aerial systems, as we're learning about different ways to counter that particular, those particular systems. And so I would, I would, I would say that those shortages and those challenges are something that we're going to definitely face. On the NATO standards, I think I'll, as the UCOM, I will, I will not, I'll defer to my colleagues, but I will, I will say this. One thing that's doing a lot to help us on that question is that I would say that many of our allies are rapidly depleting their former Soviet era stocks. So the only place we can go is together after that. Thank you.
Okay. Most critical capability gaps are, I suppose, GBAD and ballistic missile defense and maybe EW and counter UAS. And standardization, Stanaks, we have Stanaks, but we should, of course, we should make decisions what calibers we are going to use in the in the future, far future and go go towards common goal in in that sense.
Thanks for all those extremely relevant questions. Let's say that obviously well, GBAD is something that we absolutely need to find ways to fix. I mean, the shortage of ground base air defense, absolutely. Although we have to recognize, I mean, that's at the same time, lessons learned from Ukraine are really important. At the same time, we're not Ukraine. So GBAD is important, but it has to be taken in the general context of our warfighting capabilities and the ones that we would use if Russia, if Russia was, was to try something. So yes, GBAD is absolutely important, but behind that, I think the main problem, the main challenge that we're facing is industrial capacity. And because we are not absolutely sure and to put it mildly, that in any area where where we would look to compensate for for the current shortfalls that we have in all domains, we're not sure that the industry would be capable to respond in time and at speed, at speed of relevance, as we say. So beyond GBAD is something, that's clearly something we need to to find ways of solving, which is the industrial capacity. There's another, another area where I think progress has to be made and can be made quickly, and that is readiness. Because readiness is absolutely integral to our posture. If we're not capable of demonstrating that we are capable of mobilizing resources at scale within the required timeframe and the plans call for rapid mobilization within 30 days and nations are offering troops, forces, units against the requirements of this new force model, and you've all heard about tier one, tier two, under 30 days. Now, the reality of nations being able to show up with all the kit within 30 days to be able to fight is something that probably needs to be tested. And I think that's the the overall exercise policy by NATO is going to be, and the stepping up of our major exercises, I think is going to be absolutely useful to this, to demonstrate that we are either able or we're not and find where the choice points in our mobilization patterns. So standards and interoperability, I think exercises also will be able to tell you, to tell us a lot, will be a forcing function for nations to support the the compliance with NATO standards and the development of others. I mean, I would just take Locfas, for instance, I'm sure you've all heard about Locfas. It's the tool suite to be able to have a common logistic picture and be able to coordinate logistical movements. And well, if you ask around the number of countries that are actually using Locfas, which is a way also for NATO to understand and to control and coordinate force flow and the flow of equipment, I'm not sure you'd be very happy with the answer. So again, I think in in terms of interoperability and standards, the real forcing function is going to be exercises. Because then you get to the heart truth of what works and what does not work. So the more, in that domain, the more, the better.
And I think you actually touched on inferred another area that I think is going to be an important area for us to be considered thinking about, and that is, is the question of data standards as we move forward. And and how do we use these systems and maybe where we can combine systems in clever ways? Many have seen the reports of certain weapon systems being put on MiG-29s in the Ukraine context. So the ability to integrate systems together, the ability to develop data standards so that whenever we move into AI enabled command and control, when we move into big data, that we have the standards in place to be able to make good use of those capabilities. Thank you.
Good point. Thank you very much. And actually just picking up on your point on readiness, of course, in the past, readiness has been a cost control measure because if you perceive the risk to be low, you could lower readiness, which means you spend less on having available kit. So the fact that it's now dictated in those, in those plans means that the expenditure needs to be spent or the expenditure needs to be met. Other questions? Sorry, there's just behind you, yeah, glasses there. So you could say who you are as well then.
Thanks, Van Bisskop from Egmond Royal Institute of International Relations of Belgium. A question specifically for General Goujon, you mentioned the EU NATO as a priority. I would argue that within that, the following is a priority. The new commission is set to invest massively in European defense industry. My question to the commission is, yeah, what will be your guidance for that, right? Which you have to know which force we're trying to build so that you know where to invest. Well, that guidance is produced in the NDPP. So I'll ask a very politically naive question. Can NATO please share the NDPP with the European Commission and we can get something going?
Good morning, Marcin Terlikowski. I'm Acting Research Director with the Polish Institute of International Affairs. I'd like to ask about the, let's say, hedging in the current cycle of the NDPP against the scenario, the contingency, which is very often, more and more often discussed, particularly in this think tank, let's say, bubble. So there's simultaneous escalation in European and Asian Pacific theater. So basically, we may simply see some assets, particularly enablers, but not only enablers, and of course, mostly American, but not only American, not available in the European theater. So is it left now conceptually at the level of capitals to kind of, no, do the equation and and add to the capability targets agreed at NATO, the additional, let's say, surplus assets and plan for the development? Or already NATO is thinking about how to, as I said at the beginning, hedge against this potential unavailability of of assets for the for the planning? And of course, the question goes to anybody who could share, given the, of course, confidential nature of the things we're discussing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ben Cranston from Microsoft, and I just wanted to pick up on General Drigger's point about data standards. Where does that figure into the NATO planning process? What's, do we have adequate definitions of cyber capability in terms of multi domain operations? Where does digital figure in the NATO defense planning process in terms of the requirements on 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 defense spending at a nation state level?
Right. So on the, on the edge, on the question regarding the possibility to share more targets or NDPP capability requirements with the EU and in terms of NATO-EU cooperation. Well, just upfront, of course, we're limited by the possibility that's given us by an alliance of 32 sovereign nations. So there is limits beyond which we can't go. But what we're really working hard to do currently is precisely to be able to declassify some level of information that can be useful and can be shared with not only the EU but also the industry. Because what's really important is for us to explain or give an order of magnitude of the demand signal across time to other stakeholders, be they governments, of course, the industry, the bigger industries, the defense industry, or the EU or other organizations. So we're working on this precisely as we speak to be able to do this. But also, but of course, there will always be a limit to what we can, we are at liberty to share or not. But I think what really matters behind that, and that's just also a sort of segue into the second question, is fine, we can certainly share more and we can give more indication about, we can play with the requirement, but we're not there yet. And the question is not where to set the requirement, it's just to get to the to the level of just the past requirement that we already set four years ago and we're nowhere close at the moment. The CT20, capability targets that were set in 20, in 2021, agreed by nations, nations are really, I mean, European nations are really falling short already on those capability targets. So we can put the bar higher and keep, but putting the bar higher depending on the different scenario we envisage. But that's not the main problem that we're trying to solve. The problem is to make sure that nations are willing to spend enough resources in terms of money, industrial capacity and human resources, just to catch up, correct the past shortfalls and reach the level that's required. And in the next 10 years, I think that's going to be our, our, our single most important challenge. Now, in terms of plans, of course, I can't share with you the details of the plans, but it's also recognized, and I'm sure you've heard Saka saying this, that we're not planning for, well, the number of scenarios we're planning against are not just about Russia attacking with all its strength in the entire area of responsibility of Saka, which ranges from the the West Coast or the East Coast, so Eastern nations. So there are different scenarios where we're capable of responding with different tools depending on where they would attack with what amount of forces and how they are capable of reconstituting their own forces. So it's not a symmetric, it is symmetric in terms of intensity, but it's not symmetric or in terms of number of troops, of course, it doesn't, it's not number of platforms against number of platforms. It doesn't, it doesn't work that way, obviously. So but clearly, the point is we need European allies mostly to really catch up and and deliver on the requirements of 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 the plans. That's really the main challenge that we are, we're faced with today. And in terms of, in terms of standards, digital standards, it's not part of the NDPP, but it's, we have a NATO standardization organization or office that makes, takes good care of making sure that whenever a standard is developed or updated, it is disseminated across nations. And we've got this recurring series of exercises, I'm sure, I mean, COEX is familiar with you. It is a great tool precisely to either update or generate or create new standards that then are, that are then pushed out with a different community, it's a slightly different community than defense planning. But what defense planning is clearly intent on doing is assess nations also on the level of interoperability they bring to the fight. And being able to report to NATO on the level of interoperability of each individual ally. So that's going to be, that is now built, built into the, in the reports that we are producing as part of the defense planning process so that everybody knows where others sit in that domain. I hope that answers your three questions.
As a new NATO member country and frontline country, of course, we have to be sure that we do not have any critical capability gaps and shortages. So we have to build up our capabilities so that we are able to defend ourselves for tens of days alone, even if we are members. And readiness is one big issue, and I'm not so worried about military readiness. We have that readiness, but decision-making is something that I'm a little bit worried about. So decision-making capability should be quick enough and strong enough. Thanks.
And just a short comment on your question about the, coming in with the availability of assets and the, that gets to my point about risk and being able to have a clear-eyed conversation. Clearly, this is a conversation that's going on in the United States right now. I mean, there are, there are, we have global commitments and we have global challenges that we're trying to balance, and just like all the rest of us, there are limits to the resources that we have. And so there's a, we are constantly trying to evaluate what that balance is. Part of the reason for UCOM writing Alliance First, Warfighting Focused, Plans-Based, Support Plans to NATO is to better help us understand what our requirement would be to feed the conversation that's going on back in Washington, but also to try and be, to make sure that we're clear-eyed in the NATO defence planning process. Because what should hopefully come out of that is that alliance discussion on risk, how to balance risk and how to move forward in building out our readiness to execute the plans.
Thank you for an excellent panel. My name is Jan P. I'm the Secretary-General of ASD, which is the European Aerospace Security and Defence Industry Association. So I'd like to come to a question on the other part, at the other end of the chain of the military planning. When we speak about those capabilities, in an ideal scenario, obviously, we would have all the capabilities needed to do the deterrence that we all want to see. But if, and if we ever reach that level, if we would still go to war, obviously, the situation would be dramatically different, because then you would start to consume on those capabilities. Here, what industry is lacking today, in my opinion, is really how all of those capability plans and that process leads to also an industrial output requirement, because this is very difficult for industry as well to be able to deliver and ramp up if you don't know anything about what are the materials, what are the technologies, what is, what is going to be a shortage at the short term, at the midterm, at the long term, et cetera. And that planning on the industry side is also a planning that would probably take anything from two years to five years to 10 years, depending on which platforms or systems we speak about. So do you see a transformation where we actually can expect to see industrial output goals from that planning process? Because that would be helpful.
Yes, good afternoon. Matti Pesu, I'm with the Finnish Institute of International Affairs. A question to General Goujon. What are the very concrete factors that determine the capability targets appropriated to each ally? Is it like the size of the economy, military geography, political demands coming from NATO's 360 approach? And the second one, I think this also goes to General Mikkon and the Dusieni, or what's the potential of regional defence cooperation formats such as NORDEF co in meeting those targets appropriated to allies? Thank you.
Yes, this is Andreas Paparonne from Switzerland. I've been an IIIS member for over 20 years now. Last year, there were calculations circulating that Ukraine would need like around 1,155 millimetres artillery shells to have a real fighting chance. Is there, is anybody producing this amount of artillery shells, or are any plans placed to provide Ukraine with such an amount of artillery shells, either from the industry or from the side of the defence planning of any NATO countries?
So I can talk to, I could talk to each of the questions, and I'll kind of go backwards. Every time I speak, I always leave off one thing that I want to say, and your question actually allows me to go back to one of the things I wanted to say. I just wanted to give compliments to Chekia right now. They have led a multinational ammunition initiative, which is set to deliver 500,155-millimetre artillery shells to Ukraine by the end of the year. And so that also gets to some of these regional defence cooperation agreements that happen to where you do see areas where countries are coming together in partnerships to accelerate production or to accelerate capabilities. And this is one case where it's not quite to the million. I think that's going to be left on the other 50 partners in, that are coming together to support Ukraine with material support. But Chekia has done an amazing job bringing together the people to supply the 155-millimetre artillery rounds. On the regional defence cooperation agreements, that also is a place where you can find allies that have very similar capabilities. Think the kind of capabilities that come together in Norway, Sweden, and Finland in the High North, that can actually provide the kind of cooperative efforts to buy down risk, to where each individual may have challenges with risk, but because they can come together, there is a kind of, they bring, you know, the sum is greater than the, the whole is greater than the sum of its parts, and so that they can bring that to bear. And that's where we can get creative in addressing the risks that I've been referencing. And then as far as the true ramp-up of production, apart from what we're doing in support of Ukraine, the only thing that I would offer is that that starts to get into the traditional security dilemma. The minute you begin, how much, how much can you ramp up before that alone becomes an escalatory step towards conflict? And so I'll just say that that's, that is something that then does become a very, very political matter in some of those decisions. Not a very helpful answer, but I know that that's something that is going to weigh on a lot of our discussions as we go forward.
Okay, about Ukrainian aid and ammunition production. In Finland, we have strategic partnership with some industrial partners or industrial companies and so on, and we have ramped up our own capability. And I can't tell any numbers and so on, but we are quite heavy 155-millimetre ammunition producer at the moment. And same with 120 and 81-millimetre mortar ammunition as well. And about Nordic defence cooperation, I see that in, it's kind of a natural way to exercise and have close cooperation, because, okay, we don't know exactly regional plans, how they will be after new command structure and so on. But anyhow, we have lots of common in Nordics, I mean, between Norway, Finland, and Sweden. And for example, logistics, we need to have joint logistics support network in the Nordics, and that's something that we need to exercise, and NORDEF cooperation is very good basement for that.
To your, to your question regarding industrial plans, so we started last year, after the Vilnius Summit, NATO set up a Defence Production Action Plan, so that was the first step in that direction. It's built around the Conference of National Armored Directors and with you to focus precisely your attention on ways we can do better at building up our industrial production capacity and also supporting collective acquisitions, because oftentimes, we also found that some nations are struggling to find partners or to find the right vehicles for multinational acquisitions. And obviously, NSPA, which is our procurement agency, has grown significantly since and is now looking at the possibility to be used as a vehicle to contract multinational acquisitions. For the Hague Summit, you will have noticed that in the Washington Declaration, there was also a pledge for a NATO industrial capacity expansion pledge. And we're expecting that nations will report on their national plans to expand their industrial capacity by the Hague Summit and then subsequently. And the idea behind it is to make sure that we are capable of having a better view, a bit overview of what's available and where, because oftentimes, we're struggling to understand where the industry sits and where one company sits in terms of capacity, the challenges they face, and sometimes also hearing different views or different positions on own capacity by the same company depending on who they talk to. So it's really, it's going to be useful to build this also overall common industrial picture, if I may say so, by better understanding what are the plans by nations to build up this capacity. So that's going to be coming up also in the Hague. And obviously, there is a lot of discussion already going on with the new commission on precisely the ways we can support this. On criteria for apportionment of targets, well, I think you've mentioned pretty much all the right ones, and they can be wrapped up in the two principles of fair burden sharing and reasonable challenge. So fair burden sharing, obviously, you understand what that means. It's a question of demographics, GDP, size, position. Reasonable challenge is, of course, not the point to not challenge countries beyond what they would be anyway capable of delivering. There's also a question of limitations with some bigger countries, which sometimes they're not ready to accept more than a certain level. Obviously, there is now a direct connection with the plans, so where each nation sits in the plan, what they are, what they are expected to deliver according to their geographic position. And the last thing I would add is deployability. In the past, there used to be an emphasis on 360-degree deployability. So wherever you were, you would be in the alliance, you would be expected to deploy everywhere. It's no longer the case now with the focus and with linkage with the operational plans. The clear emphasis is to make sure that wherever you sit, you are capable of deploying troops in your own regional plant under your own operational command. That's clearly the top priority. And the possibility that are also targets for 360 more distant operations, but that's a limited part of the NDPP targets, very limited in a nutshell. And for the 155 ammunition, I can't really respond, it's not really my area of expertise. So I would just defer to what has already been said. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, on the 155, you heard from the Finnish example there. When I was last in Washington, in different departments of government, Assistant Secretary of the Army Bush was credited, his team, with ramping up US 155s to provide for Ukraine. He's here at the summit, so if you want to ask him how the Americans have done it, then you can as well. Any more questions? Yes, please.
Hey, good evening. Steve Shepraw, RTX, and I was the 21st NATO DCMC. So we've talked about these goals in NATO for a long time, right? Interoperability and plans-driven requirements and ability to deter and defend. How, and there's a lot of great thinking that this panel has brought clarity to and how to do this faster and differently. How do you see the relationship with industry now evolving? And what can industry do now? Not just the end state where industry has to get to, to support the ability to scale up production and the like, but how can industry support? And things I'm thinking of are risk threshold analysis, operational analysis, and just cooperative participation in exercises and warfighting. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. In my opinion, industry should take more risks, I mean, economical risks. At the moment, all the companies are waiting for state money in a way. And I'm pretty sure that if your product is good, everything will be solved during next 10 years. So don't make, make good production, production, everything will be solved.
I would say that, you know, I think that there is, you know, it's an interesting development since the 1950s, where the government was at the head of a lot of research and development, and industry would come in with a productive capability. And that has turned on its head just a little bit. And so I think there's, I think there is room for industry to be thinking some of the long, some of the big thoughts about where does technology actually take us? And to be able to figure out, hey, is there, where can we, where can we offer a better widget or a better capability? And so I think that there is definitely some value in that. I would say that it depends on the sharing, where we at with being able to share the plans to be able to understand what the requirements would be, to be able to get the industry to be able to see those requirements, and then be able to step up and then say, what can we provide? So I think that that, there's a conversation that does need to happen in order to be able to better answer that question that I'm doing right now on this panel.
I would just offer two thoughts. First of all, as we're seeing in Ukraine certainly, and it's quite obvious that it's for the industry and for us and for the users, it's always a matter of striking the right balance between extreme sophistication in certain areas and mass and cost and cost reduction in other areas. So the industry has probably taken us on a path towards sophistication, because we think that fairly in some areas, that's where our advantage is, and this is our edge over our competitors, including Russia and potentially other competitors. But there has to be a balanced strike between those two areas, mass and sophistication, and it probably needs some level of rebalancing between those two areas. And the way to get there is probably by, as you meant, as you are alluding to, getting closer to the requirements and to the operational requirements. And I think there is an encouragement across NATO for innovation, but also for testing and testing new solutions and leveraging exercises and wargaming to test new solutions. So I think ACT and ACO are very much in support of this. I can tell you, from my last conversation with the new secretary, that he's very much in favor of precisely getting closer to the industry to see where there could be potential solutions to find, well, to find new ways of responding to the challenges that we're faced with. And clearly, on the NDPP side, we are also encouraging allies to come up with different solutions if they think it's more appropriate to the demand, the operational demand that's coming from the plans. In essence, more unmanned systems is something that we are absolutely happy to welcome, provided it delivers the same effects. And so we are transitioning quickly from platform-based requirements to an effect-based requirement in terms of NDPP in the dialogue that we have with the nations.
Yes, I'm happy to come in with a comment on the industry performance, because I think it can offer a thought. So it's not a question, but it's a comment that I think can be fruitful here. I think, speaking on behalf of the European industry, I think that the European industry has not delivered its full capacity in terms of supporting the war in Ukraine. We could have done more on the industry side. I don't think it's that much about taking financial risks. I think the industry has taken to the extent they can. They've taken a lot of financial risks, but it's tricky to produce military equipment and then hope that you get the customer, because you don't, you can't sell it, you know, anywhere. And if it's, if there is no customer, then you have a problem, and the financials simply doesn't allow that. But I think there is another interesting component, and that's whether we are in a war economy or in a peace economy. And we've seen numerous examples of where the European industry has tried to ramp up its production, and it wants to, for example, it wants to buy a machine tool on the commercial market in order to be able to increase their production line. And when you do that in Europe today, then you end up in the queue between, at the end of the queue, with all other commercial players that wants to buy the same machine tool. So simply, So simply, you can be in a situation where you can't do the ramp up because you have commercial clients before on the commercial side. And there is no priority system because the company that we speak about is not in a country that is at war. Ukraine is at war, us supporting Ukraine is not at war, so we have no priority. And that, to me, is a huge problem that should be politically solved.
You know, as I've listened to the answers to your comments, sir, and then to the answers that have been said, I think the distinction of an emphasis of the capability targets to being a little bit more on the effects-based side is an important distinction because what I think that does is that offers flexibilities not only to the nations who have been given the capability targets, but to industry to begin thinking a little bit more creatively about how to actually meet those effects. And then, as I've been thinking through that, if we take a look at what we are experiencing or what the Ukrainians are experiencing, how rapid their innovative cycle has happened, in particular in regards to the counter UAS game and into the actual all things uninhabited vehicles, whether it's hunter-killer drones, whether it's attack drones, whether it's ISR and counter those same systems from Russia. The cycle time of innovation has gotten to the matter of hours, and it is a matter of survival for the Ukrainians. I think understanding, learning from that cycle time, and then thinking about how do we take those lessons learned and apply them to the effects that we're trying to get from nations may offer some insight into how industry can step into that fold and help out.
Can I just add a two finger to that comment at the end there? The implication of it is, though, that in terms of procurement, you're looking at the closest to the off-the-shelf solution you can get. Because that will by automaticity be cheaper, quicker and more interoperable.
Well, I said I might say one, which should be contentious because that's part of my job is to do that. And it's sort of, and it'll be interesting to hear it because, and I frame it in that shortly after Russia invaded Ukraine, one of our analysts said, you know, the political center of gravity in Europe seems to be shifting to the east and to the north. And we see that here as well. And of course, the transatlantic piece is over there and from France we have here. So anyway, but the, NATO, sorry. And of course, Germany has a political rumpus right now as well. But if the political center of gravity is shifting to the east and the north, yet what we see in Ukraine, and we had a discussion about it, and I haven't tracked the figures, and France probably might have, you know, maybe upwards, up to maybe a million Russian dead or wounded so far over a two-plus-year campaign against a nation-state that has had constraint after constraint. Ben Hodges, again, in Washington at the NATO summit, said, apart from Javelin, every single weapons system that has been introduced into the theater has had a political constraint on it, and then it stopped. And that's been going on endlessly. So a million, say it's a million for, you know, sort of for government work, Russians fighting a single country. My question, my contentious question and unpleasant question is, how much does NATO actually need? And so I put that, I mean, you know, I was a planner once, so once you've done a plan, you know, you want to make nine others. And so I think it's maybe an unfair question because it's also a political question. But I will throw it out here because, have you got any thoughts on that?
Well, actually, we're going through a reality test. And I think sometimes reality is probably the best teacher in this regard. And as we are stepping up our exercise drumbeat, I think some of those issues are sometimes just somewhere hidden because no one wants to bring it up clearly. All of a sudden are exposed and it's helping us solving those problems. We had, I mean, I've just been quoting this example several times today, but we had, and it's not directly linked with what you were referring to, but I think it's a good illustration of, well, there was a shipment of cargo, military cargo from a country that got blocked in a European country as part of a rotation for 24 hours because the NATO form was not presented alongside with the same EU form. And had it been for testing and exercising this deployment, we would have paid attention to this. So sometimes, I mean, oftentimes, the devil lies in details, really. And in terms of, well, constraints, caveats, political restraints, constraints that are not known, and we absolutely need to get to by just the virtue of exercising training and testing the reality, stress testing the system.
Okay, if I continue, I don't say how much we need. We need everything we can get. But on the other hand, we need to prove our strength and we need to be brave enough and we can't be afraid. Russia respects power and we need to have deterrence strong enough. That's enough.
Two thoughts on the contentious question, sir. The first one, I think you really cannot properly answer that question until we have a very clear-eyed view of the Russian culture and their leadership. This is a, this is a culture that I would remind everyone, in the face of Operation Barbarossa in World War II, literally picked up their defense industrial base on their back. And I mean that literally. You take that pipe, you take that piece of wall, you take that series of gears, and they walked it to the west, to the, sorry, to east of Moscow to protect it from the German invasion. This is a people that are very accustomed to suffering and take great pride in it. They view their losses during World War II and even now as a mark of pride. And their ability to reconstitute is one that I think we would be loath to underestimate. They're in the process of trying to do that right now, seeing as they now have somebody else to be dying on the front lines for them with a DPRK insertion into the fight. So I'd just say, as we run these calculations, we have to be very clear-eyed about that. And as I mentioned earlier, we have a degree of political stability, at least on that side of the picture, with the March election putting Putin in power at least until 2030. So I think that's something we need to keep in mind. And then I would, I would offer, yes, the political will, I think, I will say this tongue-in-cheek, but I think it's worth remembering because the fight will be kinetic at some point if that's, if it continues the way that it is. But I really do think that the, I think the West's political center of gravity belongs in the centimeters between each of our ears here in the West. And I think it's worth us all remembering and maybe digging out the Washington Treaty once more, or even just the Washington Communique, remembering our commitment to individual liberty, to democracy, to the rule of law, to a rules-based international order, and how much, how important we have all committed, how important it is that we all have committed to be together, to come together, to defend those things. That's actually what is under attack right now. It's playing itself out right now on the front lines in the Ukraine. But it's also playing it out with potential explosive packages in DHL Airlines. It's playing itself out in poisoning attacks in Europe. It's playing it out in election meddling from Moldova to the United States. And so I would offer that the political center of gravity belongs in the few centimeters between each of our ears in the West. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you again, Marcin Dlukowski from Poland. General, because I'm still thinking about the risk factor, which you said, that it's good to see stuff in red because this will motivate allies and see how far we are from actually. I don't know how to phrase it, make the defense and deterrence credible enough in the eyes of Russia because if we see red, they will see it too. But I'm thinking if, and for that you need resources, you need sustained political commitment, that's the obvious thing. But if on the way towards meeting these goals, allies, nations see that it's not doable, I mean, we will not get more than half of the boxes green, is there a way to reinvent the plans, the operational plans, so that we're kind of forced to resource-based planning? We'll be able to, I don't know, change the forward deployment posture, for instance, to make up for the shortages, which the nations do not, didn't live up right to the commitments or do not have enough resources? Is it at all possible within the conceptual framework you are working now since, I understand, Madrid? Thank you.
We'll start with NATO.
Yes.
First of all, at one point, I wanted to make, I wanted to share with you, I forgot earlier, is one message that we are conveying to all the allies is regardless of the amount of money it's going to cost and the amount of resources it's going to cost, deterrence will always come cheaper than defense. This is absolutely for sure, absolutely for sure. So it's probably worth investing in deterrence, then investing in potentially defense at a later stage. To your point now, the, it's always been assumed, and this is why we're conveying the sense of urgency, that the capability targets that we are now about to start discussing with the capitals will not be set in stone for the next 19 years. NDPP is a recurring cycle. Every four years, we go back, we will go back to the plans, see whether the plans will have been revised or not depending on Russia's situation and the terror groups also and instability. And so there's a constant updating between operational plans and defense plans. So should the situation change, of course, our assessment and the requirement from the plans will be adjusted. But for the time being, our message is, well, but it's not the time to sit and wait until the next revision because we all know the lead sign for building a capability. So that's in essence, yes, we know the plans will be revised, we know they will be constantly updated, and capability targets will be adjusted in due course, also to take account of innovation and the rapid pace of innovation that we're seeing also. It's maybe sometimes worth investing in new kit than legacy capabilities in some areas. That's, yeah, in a nutshell, the answer.
So one, I would say, I have been accused in the United States, there's a, in America, there's, someone can be accused of being Pollyanna. That's someone who's overly optimistic. I've been accused of this in the past. The red on the slide, I know in the best of worlds, it would be motivational. Most of the time, it's scary. And I know that that's going to be an area that we'll have to continue to work through. But I think it's a, it's a good perspective shift to try and think of that red as an opportunity to have these conversations. I would offer that in addition to the revisions that are going on, that's why we exercise the plans. We exercise the plans to identify the shortfalls and maybe find opportunities to improve the plans. And then that goes also as an ingredient into the discussion. The last thing I'll say is that, as Eisenhower famously said, plans are not important, planning is everything. It's the act of planning that's important. You know, as a pilot, there are many times I would plan a flight where I would have a flight plan very tight on gas. And the minute I took off, I was supposed to go right, and the air traffic controller told me to go left. I didn't throw away the plan. I now have an understanding of what I'm deviating from, and I can calculate that risk as well as I'm moving forward. And so that's an important aspect, I think, that's good, that we continue to carry out these plans so that we're clear-eyed about where we have, where we're moving from.
Okay, just a comment. Operational plans should always be based on real capabilities, not for dreams. And defense planning process, it's kind of, it's looking forward and it's recognizing those capability gaps. And those capabilities should be usable in next O plan. That's how I think it. Otherwise, if you plan by your procurement plans in operational planning, it doesn't work at all.
Thank you. So when I asked that question about how much does NATO need, I hoped from these people who inform policy, both at alliance level but also as alliance members, that we'd get an answer roughly that we did. And what I picked out of that was, as General Mikkinen said, you've got to be able to deter Russia, and that requires having a capability, even if it's not as expensive as actually fighting the defensive war, but it's still an expense. We had the comment about culture and how do we face that adversary? So I thought that that was really important, too. And then the devil is always in the detail and how you exercise, how you unload. In the back of this, you'll see there's a little vignette on exercise Lionheart and then Reforger 87. And when you think back to what NATO could do back in those days against the Group of Soviet Forces Germany and what we aspire to do now, I think that's all relevant. So I think those comments that you came back with there were exactly as I hoped that you would come up with. I'm not going to try and summarize it. I think it's been an excellent discussion. As I said, we have three people who inform policy, both at alliance and alliance member level, on the panel. Some of the things that I would take out, though, you know, we have, it's clear that the level of ambition, and it's been well expressed, both at the headquarters but also nationally. And then the plans are tied, sorry, that ambition is tied to plans and a demand, and the demand is tied to industry. And I'll conclude with what General Mikkinen said, which I thought was a great comment. If it's good, you're going to sell it within the next 10 years. So that's all that I'm going to say. So thank you very much. And please, join me in thanking our panel for a really excellent presentation.